Good evening. Welcome, everyone, for our regular city council meeting. I ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor McGarvey.
Here. Thank you. I ask our city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Friday, January 25th at 6:00 PM and Sunday, January 27th at 8:00 PM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Kurt Haven to lead us in the pledge and then invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Walt Little.
Please stand and follow me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we give thanks for the life-giving and life-renewing nature of the rains, let us call to mind the words of the prophet Isaiah, who said, "Just as from the heavens the rains come down, watering the earth and making it fertile, so shall the word of God achieve the end for which it is sent." Bless each of us in this august body and open us to the wondrous possibilities when we realize that we are the earth made fertile by the showers of your love. We are the mouths that speak your creative words and that the kingdom is fulfilled when what is your will becomes our will. As we respond to your call to servanthood, may the seeds planted and nourished within us bear the fruits of justice, compassion, and truth. Amen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Well, I think we're going to start now with item number five, the presentations, and call on Stacy Delaney for the presentations of the Community Enhancement Funds.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. And this evening ceremonial checks will be presented to organizations that were awarded funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And I ask that you come down now and join these groups as they receive their checks. And the first check being presented this evening is for a black box theater at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. The school will purchase and install theater lighting in the Carver Little Theater to enhance the educational opportunities and experience of Rancho Cordova students. Dr. Allegra Alessandri and 12th grader Mary Gardner are accepting the check for $5,000. And the second check this evening is for a kindergarten play garden at AM Win. And the outdoor kindergarten play area will have two playhouses, fencing, garden beds, a sand area, seating, stepping stones, and grapevines. Principal Nisha Trudarichi, Carrie Lewis, and Ruby Toyama are accepting the check for $10,000. a new kiln and ceramic storage shed and also install an accessible walkway to the shed at Neil Orchard Senior Center. Board member Rick Sloan, who's also a birthday boy today. Park Administrator Patrick Larkin, Laura Taylor, and Christina James are accepting the check for $27,070. The fourth check this evening is for Campus Life Connection to conduct two different programs. Point Break, which is an anti-bullying workshop, as well as a 12-week climbing academy for students in Rancho Cordova. The Climbing Academy teaches beginning climbing, team-building, confidence, and responsibility. Executive Director Dan Palmer and Angelica Wood are accepting the check for $29,500. The fifth check this evening is for Rancho Cordova Police Activities League to acquire a passenger van for use in transporting their participants in PAL programs. The van will enable more youth to participate in community service events, educational field trips, and athletics. PAL Director and Officer Jose De La Cruz and members of PAL are accepting the check for $30,000. support youth sports in Rancho Cordova. This includes improvements to sports fields, digital and traditional outreach for the promotion of sports, and increasing the quality of the coaching and player experience. Rod Borba, Rick Sloan, and Guy Anderson, all representing the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association, are accepting the check for $132,050.
I thought he wasn't happy there for a minute because he didn't get a check, but, you know, it worked out okay. Number 5.2, call on Ray Wyatt and Ross Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Stacy knew I was going to talk, so she turned it on. Hi, I'm Ross Johnson with the Rancho Cordova Rotary Club, and this is Ray Wyatt, our president-elect. On Sunday, the 27th, our Rotary Club will be celebrating 60 years in Rancho Cordova. We're the first service club founded, and we have created a lot of organizations since that time. Rotary is an international organization that does all kinds of wonderful stuff, but it's on a club-by-club basis, which means if we do something, we have to have another club someplace in the world. Our club has participated in one of the biggest outreaches, that's to eradicate polio throughout the world. There's only three working with Rotary, three countries left with polio. We've also, last two years ago, helped build a water well in India, delivered wheelchairs to Peru, and built a medical clinic down in Mexico. At the district level, and our district covers from Orville all the way down to Walnut Grove, we've helped create Mason Lake Rotary Recreation. If you've been out to Mason, that's one of the biggest things we've done out there. Mile 14 of the American River Parkway, there is a large group, fire pit camp area, that was a Rotary project called Rotarians at Work, which do that. But the biggest grant that's going on right now is Rotary International has not given money to US-based districts until this year. And we just received last year a grant for $380,000 to combat human trafficking, which is rampant. And this is a program where we work with the school districts to provide curriculum to empower the students to make informed decisions about this terrible area. And we've been working directly with Folsom Cordova School District. It's been very, very, very good. At the local level, we give dictionaries to every 3rd grader in our dictionary school. We work with B Street Theater to have a screenwriting program at the elementary schools. At the high school level, we have the Rotary Leadership Academy, where we send students away for one week of leadership. We have an interact club at Cordova High School, speakers contest. And we're also magic makers with the Cordova Community Council. On top of that, we have done some local projects. And I'd like to especially point out last year that the Park District people are gone, but with the help of Mayor Budge and city manager Cyrus, we were able to come together with the American, I mean, not American, with the Parkway Marathon Association, the Park District Rotary, and the city. And now there is a beautiful ADA accessible water fountain down in Hagan Park. So that's a collaborative effort. This year, we are working with Sacramento Splash to put signage out at Mason Regional Park. As you've been out there, it's been, it's not in good condition. And since it's right here in our community, we're going to redo all the signage, so you have wave finding stations. And we're doing that through Splash, another great organization in the Rancho Cordova area. Our Rotary Club also has a foundation, and that foundation helps support what we call the Rotary Community Corps. In our city, that is a group of students, adults, at Folsom Cordova Adult School, who provide language skills to us when we work at the Food Locker and at IFest. And you can always tell them, because they've got that big, beautiful vest on. Also, we provide $2,500 to the Cordova Food Locker on a quarterly basis for baby foods to take care of them. And we provide hometown hero grants, up to $4,000 to anybody applies for those grants. So we do a lot in the community, and we continue to do that. One of the ways we do that is because we have a wonderful crab feed, which is our 25th year coming up on the 16th. And this board and its members have always been wonderful to support ours. But in a way of our thank you, this idea actually came by with one of our council members, Dan Scoglan. When he was elected, he brought to our attention that it's difficult for council members to be on everything, that he's made this suggestion that, how about we make a tradition of making council members honorary members of Rotary? And that's from Dan, 15 years ago. And as an honor to Dan and honor you and all your support tonight, Ray is going to pronounce you with your honorary Rotary membership badge. Ray?
Okay. Can I approach you, guys?
Can you come down and get them?
Congratulations. I hope you enjoy being a member of the city. Congratulations. I feel honored to give these badges out, because we would really like you guys to...
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Ray. I still have my honorary pin.
Oh, very good.
Absolutely. Yeah, for sure. Super. I love the classification.
These badges are, Rotarians wear these badges at their meeting. If they don't have a badge on at the meeting, they are subject to fine.
Yeah.
So we keep the badges at the Rotary Club in a box that'll have your name on it or a number on it.
So we have to attend and leave them there?
Yes, that's the idea. We'd like you to come by and see what happens in a Rotary Club meeting at least every once in a while. Make it a point to come by at least once a year, or more often if you'd like. But we do wonderful things, and we focus on the community and on the world.
Well, that's for sure.
Could we mind getting a picture of you?
I encourage all my colleagues to get involved.
I was going to say, I know the Kiwanis make a regular habit of inviting us, so be happy to come, though.
He didn't know he was. He's out of town on business. But he did remind me, the badges stay in the badge box, so I'm taking them all back.
Gentlemen, just to remind the audience, your meeting Tuesday at noon.
12:15.
Very good.
Well, thank you, Ray and Ross, for that honorary membership. That's great. We can, at least we're not going to lose it, because they've got it now, so. Okay, 5.3, Steve Harriman, call for an employee introduction.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, members of the council. I'm Steve Harriman with the Department of Public Works, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to introduce a new employee to our Public Works Operations and Maintenance Team. I'm here tonight with Natasha Erickson, and she is a customer service representative in Public Works, and she is working at our corp yard on Lu Young. I want to stress what an important position this is, to be a customer service representative. We handle a large call volume. We handle calls on a wide variety of subjects and topics. Sometimes we're surprised by the calls that come in. Some of our callers are not happy, and that can be difficult to navigate. But most importantly, for many people, the first actual contact that they have with our city is through the customer service line, and sometimes that's the only contact. And so we need somebody in that position who is polite, who has an attention to detail, and is a problem solver. And we sure found that with Natasha. Natasha graduated from Folsom High School in 2003. She has previously worked as a customer service rep and claims adjuster for Allstate Insurance and VSP. She lives in Citrus Heights with her husband Rich and her two-year-old son Everett and her 11-month-old son Graham. So she's got her hands full. She loves spending free time with her family. They go camping, they have an RV, and they love to go to the beach and into the mountains. And we're absolutely delighted to have her on our team, and I please join me in welcoming Natasha to our city team.
Thank you. I love working for the city so much. I love working for the city so much, and I really appreciate the opportunity I've been given.
Well, I would like to say, congratulate you both, because, you know, so often in government, the only opportunity that people come in contact with their government is for a negative reason. If you think about it, you know, paying taxes is not the most pleasant thing to do, and so often the contacts are through law enforcement. So for those of us who have people as a customer service position, who understand that not everybody calls in a good mood, we really appreciate your doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to ask Linda Budge for the presentation of a proclamation to honor Jill Stockinger for her retirement at the Sacramento Public Library. Come on up, Jill.
Going to bring your team? Team, come on.
I see no reason for this to be taller than we are. We'll stand behind you. Yes, sure.
Well, I just want to say that this is another one of the bittersweet moments that we get to experience in this city. We have people who come, whether they're city employees or whether they're with one of our partners in the community, and they bring their wonderful skills and their great smiles and their lovely attitudes, and they share them with us for a certain period of time, and then they go away again. And, you know, they retire, or they get promotions, or they get offered a new job. And so we have been so lucky for the past 12 or so years to have Jill with us at the library. She truly has been, as you all know, she truly has been a bright spot, and everybody in this room has seen Jill at a whole host of community activities, community events. They've had booths, they've had, they've brought books, they've just done all sorts of things. So we wanted to take the opportunity of having Jill retire to just give her something as a token of our appreciation. So this is a proclamation honoring Jill on the occasion of her retirement. And she really deserves it, because whereas Jill has served libraries across the country for more than 40 years, and she was hired here in 1999 to serve the patrons of the Sacramento Public Library. And whereas since joining the Sacramento Public Library nearly 30 years ago, she has served and worked as a librarian at the Central Library, the Carmichael Branch, Arcade Branch, Southgate Branch, and the Rancho Cordova Branch. And whereas Jill was schooled and trained at the University of Wisconsin in Madison, where she earned her undergraduate and graduate degrees, and whereas Jill has served the Sacramento Public Library here in Rancho Cordova as the branch supervisor librarian three since 2007, and how lucky we have been to have her as a member of our community. And whereas Jill has overseen the efficient operation of our local branch, she has supervised the librarians, served as a member of various library committees, fulfilled duties as a hub library for accessibility, overseeing grants, including the Veterans Station and the Read and Feed Children's Training Garden, and scheduled general library outreach and programs. There, for, I think I'm not the only one who knows that, there are often more special programs at the library than there are days of the month, guys. This is quite an accomplishment. Whereas Jill has also built and maintained strong relationships with community partners, such as the Rancho Cordova Branch Friends Group, the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, the Cordova Community Council, the City of Rancho Cordova, and the Healthy Food Network Collaboration. Jill also participated and is a graduate of Leadership Rancho Cordova, graduating in Class 5. Jill is the best librarian Rancho Cordova has had in 25 years, and her community participation, including encouraging her staff to get involved, has been a model for all, and we mean that sincerely. So therefore be it resolved that the city council, the City of Rancho Cordova, expresses its sincere appreciation to Jill on the occasion of her retirement and for having served as an ambassador for our library system. And so Bob has signed this, and we want to provide this to you to commemorate the occasion.
Thank you, Jill. That was very kind. I love working for her.
I'm so glad. Your turn.
I want to thank the City of Rancho Cordova and everyone who works for Rancho Cordova and the city council for their tremendous support. They've always supported the library, they promote us all the time. We couldn't have done such a good job without them. I want to thank them, and I also want to take this time to thank Rifka Sass, our director, who's right here, for being one of the most forward, cutting-edge directors in the entire United States. She's created change in a huge bureaucratic system where it's very hard to change, and she does it all the time. And I want to thank her and Linda Budge and everyone on the city council for all your help. Thank you.
Next, 5.5, I might ask Cyrus to come up to the podium there.
So, good evening, council. This is, this is, as the mayor, as councilmember Budge mentioned, this is probably another bittersweet moment, as we want to say goodbye to a dear colleague, friend, and mentor, Kurt Haven. Kurt has over 20 years of history with this community and has left an indelible mark and would be greatly missed. Kurt was the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce prior to the cityhood and was instrumental in helping the city to incorporate. He served as chair of the incorporation committee from November 2002 to July of 2003 and became the city's first employee, ultimately serving as the city's first economic development and neighborhood services director. He has been a key member of the city's leadership team, and we appreciate his loyalty and commitment to the community. Kurt, if I can ask you to please join me here? Kurt, as you move on into the next wonderful chapter of your life, we will miss your professional expertise and your friendship, and know that our very best wishes and thoughts go with you. I hope you come and visit us often. We have prepared a proclamation, and I'm asking Mayor McGarvey to present this proclamation, read and present this proclamation to Mr. Haven. I'm sure he has some comments that he wants to make, and any other council members who wish to say. wish to say a few words.
Proclamation honoring Kurt Haven on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Kurt Haven was instrumental in helping with the city of Ranch Cordova as a victory to incorporate in 2003 as a new city. He served as the chair of the incorporation committee from November of 2002 to July of 2003. Whereas Kurt was hired as the city Ranch Cordova's first employee in 2003, soon became the city's economic development director. And whereas Kurt later led the city's first economic development and redevelopment department, housing division, and code enforcement division. Some highlighted accomplishments include the removal of 300 substandard housing units, the demolition of Stagger Inn, secured jobs with the community through his business detention retention efforts, led an award-winning proactive code enforcement and animal services division, and chaired the growing, strong neighborhood committee for five years, leading to an award-winning community, neighborhood, and economic education program. Whereas since incorporation and since the last 15 years, Kurt has excellently served in leadership and hiring committees to build city developments, departments, and hired new employees. Sound like a grandson, I don't know him. Whereas Kurt has been a strong supporter of the creation and sustainability of Ranch Cordova travel and tourism, and has served diligently in his capacity as a strong member, board member, and whereas Kurt has also been an advocate for the Ranch Cordova Leadership Program and graduated from his class in 2011. Whereas Kurt's loyalty and commitment to Ranch Cordova is unquestionable. His dedication to the community is truly remarkable. He has helped shape the minds, hearts, and passion of this great community for over 25 years in the various roles he has held. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Ranch Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation to Kurt Haven for his service and dedication to Ranch Cordova. Witnesswhereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City Ranch Cordova to be affixed this 22nd day of January 2019. Dang, I'm crying already. Dang, okay, it'll be done in a second. Okay, I emailed this because I thought maybe I couldn't get through it. So it's coming to you. He's cool. We like him. He's fine. That's one reason I'm retiring. It's going to be fun, but I guess I'm the daycare person now, you said? Matthew? I'm not sure about that. Okay, so Mayor McGarvey and the members of the City Council. Thank you for taking the time to honor my service to the city. I don't, can't do this. It's been a great ride. This was way too serious. Linda's crying too. You know where my heart is, and I love Ranch Cordova. I'm sorry.
Well, none of us have adequate words. There's no question about it. It, you know, the thing is, as Shelley said in her communication, we wouldn't be where we are today without you, and you know that. The funny thing was, for those of you who don't know, when Kurt was hired as the CEO of the chamber in like 95 or so, the first thing he did was come down with appendicitis and have to rush off to the hospital, and we weren't even really sure he was going to stick around or be able to stick around. But here we are, all these, what, 24 years later, and no, we wouldn't be where we were, where we are without you.
Thank you.
And we'll always appreciate that.
I'm going to try this again. That worked really well, Rebecca. Thank you for taking this time to honor my service to the City of Ranch Cordova. From my time on the incorporation committee in the late 1990s, way back, to my first day as the first city employee in 2003, today, sitting in this beautiful, productive city hall, one more drink, I am proud of everything we have accomplished. When I signed on 15 and a half years ago, it was to ensure the viability and the longevity of our new city, and we can all agree, we have been successful. That's only half. The City of Ranch Cordova is the region's largest employment subcenter with a prominent economic development organization and a growing, robust community. So I now leave the visioning and care in your hands to the members of our city team and to the emerging leaders of our community. It's your time now. Tag, you're it. Thank you.
Kurt, before you step away, Kurt, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but you know, there's a lot of people in this room that love you, Kurt, and Kurt is one of those remarkable men who has been successful at everything he's tried, near as I can tell. He's been successful in business, he was successful at the chamber, he's successful in his role here at the city, his many roles here in the city, many, many, many roles here in the city, some still unreported as of this day. And of course, he's been very successful in his family, and I think any of us would be happy with one of those successes. Kurt has been blessed with many of those successes, and I'm just going to list three because there are so many Kurt stories, some of which we can't tell in this setting, but so many Kurt stories, I'm just going to talk about three that immediately pop to mind when I think of Kurt. The first one is probably blatantly obvious, but perhaps not so for everyone. None of us would be here in this room at this time without Kurt Haven. This city would not exist without Kurt Haven. Now, there are other people in this room I could probably, maybe one or two, I could point to and say the same thing, but for him, none of us would be here except for what he did when he was at the chamber, as the chamber exec, as the chamber pushed us over the goal line. It wouldn't have worked without Kurt. So Kurt, we have you to thank, and the tens of thousands of people who live in this city and have a better quality of life because of it, have you to thank.
Thank you.
And only you for that.
Thank you.
The second amazing thing about Kurt is that Rancho Cordova was always first. No matter what situation we were in, no matter what challenge we were facing, no matter what opportunity was in front of us, no matter what path, no matter what city we were in, what we were doing, in his mind, we're here for Ranch Cordova, we got to put Ranch Cordova first, how do we get Ranch Cordova the head of the line? What can we get out of this for Rancho Cordova? He has an unmatched commitment, in my experience, to this city. No one on city staff can match it. Council members, frankly, I don't think can match it. He has an unbelievable commitment to this community, a loyalty that I have not probably ever seen before, and it is a remarkable thing to pair that with his skills and his success and the benefits that that has brought our city. So thank you for putting Ranch Cordova first and for having that commitment and loyalty. And the third thing, he alluded to a little bit, we have a unique place in the economy of the region, and it's not an accident. It's in large part due to Kurt's actions. Kurt had a huge impact on how we formed this city, what we thought about as we formed this city, and building up sort of the business base of this city, and that's a huge asset for us going forward, an unmatched one in the region, and we have Kurt to thank in large part for a lot of that success. So Kurt, as a colleague, as a friend, as a mentor of mine, thank you. I don't think you can ever hear all the thanks of all the people in Ranch Cordova, but on behalf of them, I just want to thank you for everything you've done to contribute to this place.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
David, I should have cut you off because I don't want to have to follow you in with that. Kurt, I would just say that, you know, what I remember first was, after winning a very close race, that you were really the first city employee to reach out to me, to talk about what you did and to figure out how I might be able to help you or to understand better what you were doing. And I'll remember that because not everybody knew what to do with a guy that won by three votes, right? And was he going to be bitter at his colleagues, and how was he going to take that approach? Hopefully, I didn't come off as bitter. But honestly, I really want to thank you for your friendship, getting to know you over the last six years here, getting to know your family, being at a lot of soccer games and Little League games together and soccer practices and other things, getting to know this great family that you've helped raise and support has been really great. And it's just interesting that, you know, a lot of your grandkids are the same age as my kids, and so it's been a blast getting to know you and the rest of your family, and congratulations on being able to have a lot more time with them.
Thank you. We're still friends, so, you know.
Of course. I'll see you at the soccer games.
See you at the soccer games.
Thank you.
Council, if we could join us for a picture, please? We'd appreciate it.
Davis, come on up.
It's your picture. Come on, baby.
And it's growing.
Cyrus, I'm going to look forward, Cyrus.
Okay, look at all the cameras at once.
And I start apologizing, and he goes, "No, that's what the chamber should have done."
Chamber has thrown a lot of jokes, right? How many times? Good job, Ben. Yeah, good job. He just turns to you.
I haven't even looked.
Keaton was making all that, and I apologized.
I think everyone is thinking about all the things that they've done with and seeing what Kurt has done to help our city, to help us individually, and we can't see enough, so I'm not going to try to keep on saying everything, so I won't. I just want to say thank you. Okay, valid comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. It looks like this. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be in emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. We have anyone from, any postcards, or postcards, any speaker cards?
Yes, I have three speaker cards. The first speaker is Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Darrell Langwell.
Kurt, as you head out the door, this is for you. For all of us who were in the mix to create the city and starting in the mid-1990s, I think you should consider issuing us powdered wigs as founding fathers. So Bob, definitely you, Linda, Shelley, whoever was around, Kurt, and for a photo op or maybe even a painting, so that you can put it up in City Hall, and when you guys have tough decisions, you think, what would the founding fathers do? Anyway, goodbye, Kurt. Good luck to you. Have a wonderful retirement. Now, my minute here is to update you on science and protecting public health as the city moves out onto the Aerojet Superfund site. And back in August 2017, I dropped off some papers to be archived in terms of looking for a particular form of cancer that'd be indicative that the remediation system wasn't working and how you could prove that by looking at neural tube defects. So the update I want to give you is, there's been a media brouhaha in Indianapolis, back where I was raised, and one of these four cancers is the lead cancer on the fence line of the factory in question. So David, what's the use of having a hypothesis without testing it? So I'm working with those folks, that the name of the cancer is Epindymoma, which is in the lining of the brain, and it's an abandoned factory, and the family in the closest to it had a child with that cancer back in 96. So again, the stuff that I've archived with you guys, I will now go out in Indiana and test when I go to visit my mother on a regular basis back in that neck of the woods. So again, David, what's the use of having a hypothesis unless you test it in the real world? Thanks, guys, and thanks, Kurt, and thanks founding fathers, or founders. Later, guys.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Darrell, and then following Darrell will be Anil.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, councilmembers Darrell Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. It was announced last week that Citrus Heights will be going to a district representative form of government from the at-large representation that they currently have. That will occur in 2020. Citrus Heights did it because of the possibility of what they felt would be very expensive and losing court battles. I would like to see Rancho Cordova go to a district representation model, and I would like to see it be done without the threat of legal action. I think it would, the way the city's growing, I think district representation, to make sure everybody feels like they have their say in what's going on, would be the proper way to go for Rancho Cordova. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell.
Good evening, council. We just celebrated a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. birthday, and I want to state a quote from him, "The time is always right to do what is right." In last 15 years as a city, we have made a significant progress, and as a community, we are all thankful and proud of the accomplishment. As Kurt mentioned just a few minutes back, you as emerging leaders, think about the challenges ahead of us. Look at the challenges, opportunities, and changing demographic today in our community. Aspirations and ambitions of the citizens are way, way different from what we had 15 years back. We need to embrace that change. What we all need is for the generation visionary leaders and thinkers at all levels of government to see the promise of the future and act, making ourselves relevant for the future. Today, state and federal government have a lot of programs that can help cities to create greater equity and prosperity with technology that provides better-paying jobs for all Americans. I was disappointed when the city presented legislative priorities for 2019. There is no mention of City manager gave me opportunity to present my vision and ideas last year, February 16th, in his office. But after that, there was no progress made and never made a priority for this council on this subject. This is really disappointing. We couldn't make this as a priority in last one year. Tech economy will be the foundation for our city future success, for better-paying jobs, for innovation and inclusion, for new era of prosperity for all Rancho Cordovans.
Please wrap up your comments.
Look at our neighboring cities. Sacramento is aggressively making city center for future mobile technology hub. Folsom, Stockton, West Sacramento, every city across America initiating some or other programs to compete and capture next tech economy growth. I want to leave a question. Why Rancho Cordova is not stepping in the direction? I want to just end a quote. As President Truman said, "In periods where there is no leadership, society stands stills." Progress occurs when courageous, skillful leaders seize the opportunity to change things for the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have at this time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak that hasn't filled out the card yet? Okay, seeing no one else, then I'll go on to council reports. Donald Terry.
I'll keep it pretty brief. Next week will be my final meeting on the Air District as its chair. We'll be electing two new chairs. Likely Eric Gera, who is vice chair, will become chair, and they got to figure out who the heck the vice chair is. I'll leave it to Bob to talk about the angels that landed today, but there was some cool stuff in the air today. But some of you know I took a job with a bank located in Chico, and so I had a training last Monday, so I was around there Sunday afternoon. And just something really kind of stark and kind of strange that if you haven't been to Chico in a while, but you're familiar with their downtown, they have the old city hall up facing the town square, and behind it is the new city hall. And if you drive by that old city hall now, there's a sign there that you wouldn't expect, and I didn't expect to see, and it says "The Town of Paradise" on the old city hall. And to think that a city of, what, 10,000, 15,000 people, their city hall right now is, what, 40 miles to the west in the county seat, and they're using somebody else's city hall. And just to think of what can happen in a community in a natural disaster like that. So, it was really just, it took me, because I actually drove by it, saw it, and actually went back around the block just to make sure I actually saw what I thought I saw. So, the next time you're up there, you can check that out. But to think that, you know, how long that may have to be there, because, I mean, they still haven't even figured out what they're going to do with the rubble and where to put it. So, it's really affecting communities up there just in ways I am still grasping. Besides that, I want to thank staff for the great workshop that we had last week on code. I think we were able to help a lot of people that, I think, had frustrations and really wanted to share their thoughts, do it in a thoughtful and well-managed way without getting too chaotic and too many grandstanders. And then finally, my family and I, or my son and my father and I, attended the Breaking Bad the last day of that exhibit, and that was a lot of fun. And now, I want to say, I've been in that building a couple of times before, but I haven't been able to make most of the exhibits that have come up. But the way that they set up that room and still had room for the kids to be able to play with some Legos kind of at one end of the room, I thought was just fantastic. You know, it didn't take too long to go through the whole thing, and I'm sure that was one of the busier days because it was the last day to do it. But hats off to Cordova Community Council and everybody else who were part of it. It was a lot of fun. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Linda?
Well, I don't really have much of a report because we're moving, and I haven't done much other than that. But I would just, in terms of Breaking Bad, actually, their attendance was astounding. I'm pretty sure by the time I got there that last day, which was probably 1:30 or so, they'd already had 1,000 people. They were taking, you know, keeping track of the attendance on a daily basis, and it was really phenomenal, so. So, please excuse me, I have to go home and pack more.
All right.
Garrett?
First of all, the Breaking Bad was amazing. Thank you for doing stuff that's outside the box when it comes to art. I think more of this will attract a different generation, and that thing that you're doing when it brings that kind of energy to a new area is always awesome. Happy belated Martin Luther King Day. It was a great event downtown SAC. I'm hoping someday to actually have one of those marches out here in Rancho Cordova, but that was amazing. I think one of the coolest businesses I've seen in a long time opened up for kids in Rancho Cordova as a partial open was the Code Ninjas, an actual school that instead of doing athletics is used to train kids how to code. And so, you get little badges like a black belt, a white belt, a yellow belt, when you're able to code different things. And out of all the cities that they told him to open in, he chose to open in Rancho Cordova, even though the city of Folsom tried to poach him at the end to come up and start by opening up the services there. He said, "No, I'm going to start in Rancho Cordova because the STEM Academy, and I think this is a great place, and our city's better than him than the one up there." So, the first one between El Dorado Hills and Folsom and all those areas is in Rancho Cordova. They're already starting to book up. It's an amazing place. It's for us nerds, and actual engineering and science groups to the point where they program robots. They brought in the STEM Academy from Cordova High and did a robot contest where they were throwing blocks back and forth. And it's just nice to see that kind of engineering and sciences and how interested people are into extracurricular activities. And so, of course, my boys are going to do it because we're coders by nature, but amazing. Everyone should go to the Code Ninja. If you don't have your kids in sports, have your kids in something like that, because I want to support more business like that coming into Rancho Cordova. And then I went and saw Nordstuy BIA. It's nice to hear that our reputation exceeds us, and this is a good place to build. So, all the builders out there, we want more homes, we want more houses, and it's nice to see that they're looking forward to building in our area. I'd like to report that Sunrise Elementary has officially won its first game, basketball game, in two and a half, maybe four years ever. We officially trounced the other team from Elk Grove, and it was good. It was good. This team beat us by 56 points last year. That hurt a lot. 56 points. It was my first win ever, and I'm not going to lie, I was so happy for it. Thank God. It was so painful. I've never lost by so many points in my life. But Garrett Jr. and the team, the team was able to pull out a win by 11 points. They were up by 33 points at one time before I put another team in, but I'm very happy to see that they didn't dunk on us like they did last year. Dunked on us, fifth and sixth graders. Basketball. First win. And fifth and sixth graders, yeah, they went up. I'm glad to see all this new energy for the basketball, and the stuff is changing in the city. I just, I really feel the energy right now. We're in a really good place, and I really see a lot of big things coming down the line. That's it.
Thank you. David?
Well, I guess I'll stick with the theme, and we're going to have to put the Rancho Cordova Diplomacy Corps out, because our, the basketball team I'm affiliated with, the varsity team at SJV, in the past couple of weeks has beaten Folsom and Roseville.
Yes.
Teams from the city of Sacramento, the unincorporated county, Elk Grove, and West SAC, so we got a lot of fences to mend. So sorry. Anyway, Rancho Cordova Athletic Association had a meeting a week or two ago. We have a joint marketing campaign going on in the schools. We have very high hopes for that. It's matched by outreach online, using social media. We continue to try to reinvent how we reach parents and get them engaged in all the opportunities that we have for youth sports here in Rancho Cordova. So, sort of along the lines of what Garrett was just talking about, there's a ton of stuff available out there for kids, and we're just doing our best to be sure parents have as much access to that as possible. I spoke to leadership Rancho Cordova about two weeks ago about growing strong neighborhoods, the importance of trying to fix up older neighborhoods that otherwise face a sort of a systematic decline, gave some history of what we've done in Rancho Cordova, and then sent those leadership students out with Loriann, who is, of course, our volunteer coordinator and woman of much achievement here in City Hall, out to look at a neighborhood sort of critically and report back. And I think that was a great exercise. Hope the, soon as I see Diane from the chamber here in the audience, I hope they enjoyed all of that engagement from the city. But I think it's a very important message to those key leaders in our community. I attended League of City, California City Committee meetings last week for revenue and taxation. There was, there are several interesting legislative proposals that could have enormous impact on Rancho Cordova were they to get to the point of law. For example, Senator Beal has a reinvest in challenged communities initiative that, on a per capita basis, would bring us something like 1.4 million a year in reinvestment in older neighborhoods. And you could use that for housing rehab, all sorts of things. But, you know, that's just a legislative proposal, and I think the legislature has spent the surplus four times over already if you look at the bills that have been filed. But Beal, you know, is a senior senator, who knows? We're going to have to keep a very close eye on things going on there, and I've been in touch with Maria and working with the League of Cities where I serve on the board, trying to maintain our position as best as possible to get in line for some of that funding. I also attended a reception for new council members that the league was holding and met a number of colleagues from our region who are new elected officials and from our division within the league. Bob and I went and met with Kurt and Cyrus, the new, well, somewhat new CEO of ESP. That was a very great meeting, talking about their future in this community and the things they're looking for. Oh, and last week I was sworn in as SECOG chair. So, one more regional body falls to Rancho Cordova leadership. Hopefully, it's a benefit. You're now stepping out, I'm stepping into one. And coincidentally, really, honestly, coincidentally, we got a notice of a $1.2 million grant two days later.
Just accidentally.
That came, it's totally unrelated, it actually came from the state.
Tripped and fell a million dollars' footwood into her pocket?
Kind of. We had applied to the state and gotten some funding, and then LA had gotten a huge amount of funding, and it turned out LA couldn't deliver on what they promised in the state program. So, the state came back and said, "Who's next on the list?", and it was us. So, it's $1.2 million to fix up sidewalks and create safer routes to schools. So, you'll see crossings, safe crossings, sidewalks around schools that currently don't have that. And we have a priority list, as I understand it, Cyrus, so easy to apply the money to existing issues. Civic Lab, that is a SECOG project where you get city officials together, both elected and staff and developers and outside engineers together to talk about really hard problems that cities are facing. The one I have challenged City Lab to do, this is a SECOG program this year, is to look at aging commercial corridors like Folsom Boulevard, because every jurisdiction in our region who's a member of SECOG has some sort of old suburban corridor, some old commercial corridor that needs rehab and fixing up. And Civic Lab kicked off their session this year right here in Rancho Cordova City Hall with a ton of energy, so it'll be very exciting to see what all of those teams working in all those jurisdictions on the same problem come up with in terms of solution. I charge them to think very big, like, to the extent that, you know, regional sanitation fees inhibit infill, that's something we as a region need to take on. And I'm hoping that a big effort like that, that sort of pushes the edges of the envelope, can lead to some big thinking on part of those agencies that often have policies that inhibit the exact thing we're all after. And then finally, Bob and I attended the Music Boosters Crab Feed for Cordova High School on Saturday night. It was a blast, as usual, with tons of great music from the band, a bunch of great people there cramming the hall at St. John Bianni, and that was my first crab feed of five, I think, scheduled this year, almost every week in a row for the next four weeks. So, crab was great. I think we heard about the Rotary one coming up, right? We'll all be there. All right, that's my report. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a great crab feed. Thank you, David, for that. And next weekend is another crab feed for the Knights of Columbus. And as you said, the next month, I think, I'm not sure of the date, I didn't get it written down for the Rotary, but if you like crab, if you like shrimp, if you like, if you don't like crab, you can tell them you like to have chicken, you'd rather have steak, and they'll get that for you also. I just after want you to buy the ticket, so they'll fix for you whatever you want. But that was a lot of fun. And it's always fun listening to the band and watching the kids enjoy themselves. They're so good on that music. Let's see, go back to Kurt for a minute. There's impossible to have anybody be another Kurt, but then we're all individuals. But Kurt has been doing so much for the city, and I think he will continue to do that as a volunteer, as doing something to keep himself busy. And the fact that he has, he's going to be taking some time with his parents, he's going to be with his grandparents, and he'll have enough to do, but now that he's retiring, he'll find out what real business is, because I've done that. And you can really find out how much more you can do with retirement. You'll be doing more and more and more and more. It's a lot of fun, really. I got a call from Harry Madden. I'm not sure if you may remember him. He lives on, excuse me, on Columba Road, behind the big bushes that are there on Columba. There's a little side street there, and that's where part of that money that David was talking about is going to go to put in sidewalks. A lot of the kids from Cordova High walk along that street, but there are no sidewalks there, but they're going to be now. Harry Madden got a letter from the city saying this is what's going to be done there, and he didn't quite understand the letter. He asked, "Well, are they going to be putting in a sidewalk, or are they going to take my street or my house?" I said, "No, they don't want your house, but they're going to put in the sidewalks." So, we had someone from code enforcement go there and explain to him what was going on. So, he's very pleased about that. They're putting in sidewalks where they aren't sidewalks right now. The, let's see, mosquito and vet control, right now is a good time for you to go through your property and look at the power, you know, the flower plants and things like that, because there's a lot of people who still have a lot of water just standing, and a lot of the mosquitoes don't really care if it's cold or not. They're still going to be around. So, dump that water that's standing there. Since it's not raining anymore, knock on wood right now, then it has the chance for you to go out and get rid of that water, because it doesn't take long for the mosquitoes to hatch, and you'll find out real quick if you have mosquitoes around your house. You know, years ago, we had a call from the people at the, maybe their community campus, and they said, "There are so many mosquitoes around here. How come?" So, we had the people from Mosquito Vet Control Board go check, and they found that underneath the buildings was a leak in the pipes under there, and that was hatching so many millions of mosquitoes, but it didn't take long for them to stop that attack anyway. But look around your house, just make sure you're not adding to the number of people or number of mosquitoes are going to be in there. Right now, it's kind of quiet, as I said, for most things, but like I said, remember that mosquitoes are, they've been around since dinosaurs, so they're not going to go away right now. Let's see. I think that's about it, because other things have been added, and I think it's going to stop for now and pass on to NASCAR.
What about the Blue Angel?
because there's a lot of people who still have a lot of water just standing. And a lot of the mosquitoes don't really care if it's cold or not. They're still gonna be around. So, dump that water that's standing there. Since it's not raining anymore, knock on wood right now, then it had the chance for you to go out and get rid of that water because it doesn't take long for the mosquitoes to hatch and you'll find out real quick if you have mosquitoes around your house. You know, years ago, we had a call from the people at the Mather Community Campus and they said, "There are so many mosquitoes around here. How come?" So, we had the people from Mosquito Vet Control Board go check and they found that underneath the buildings was a leak in the pipes under there. And that was hatching so many millions of mosquitoes. But it didn't take long for them to stop that attack anyway. But look around your house. Just make sure you're not adding to the number of people or number of mosquitoes are gonna be in there. Right now, it's kinda quiet, as I said, for most things, but like I said, remember that mosquitoes are, they've been around since dinosaurs. So, they're not gonna go away right now. Let's see. I think that's about it because other things have been added and I think it's gonna stop for now and pass on to.
What about, what about the Blue Angel?
Blue Angels?
Pardon me?
The Blue Angels that you got to see today?
Yep, the Blue Angels. Sorry about that.
I was leaving that for you.
Thank you, yes. No, I had an opportunity to go out and meet the two new pilots in that Blue Angel that landed there today at Mather. They're there to find out what's here and both of them are brand new. They've never been here on the show for the Blue Angels here at Mather in our airshow. So, they're here, they're over at the Marriott. They're also looking to see what else is around here in Rancho Cordova. They'll be passing it on to other members of the Blue Angels. And you could tell it was the Blue Angels, you could hear them coming way back off. But it's a lot of fun and they were great people. So, I was really glad that they were able to come and then I was able to go out and meet them and greet them. The first time we had an airshow was in 2006 and I was mayor then. The Blue Angels landed and Linda and I went out. It was drizzly, but we were more than happy to welcome the Blue Angels to Mather and to Rancho Cordova. So, they're coming back again in October the 5th and 6th. That's when you're gonna be needing to get your tickets. So, October 5th and 6th is when the airshow is going to be this year. So, the Blue Angels and you know there can be an awful lot more than that. So, very good. Thanks for the reminder. I appreciate it. And now on to our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just about everything has been already mentioned, so I'll be very brief. One thing I would like to remind the, the audience was the presentation that our mayor made at the monthly luncheon, Cordova Community Council Luncheon and the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon last Friday. We had a full house. The topic was taking the audience through, through a time travel since, from four years ago when Bob was the mayor's to today and was well received. And thank you Bob and congratulations for a great presentation. The only two other things I wanted to point out that we have, on January 29th, we have an official visioning kickoff session for the upcoming budget. And also on January 31st, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting the business outlook and economic forecast at the River City Christian Church at 8:00 a.m. Just to remind you, this provides a great insight on our economy and the city and the community and invite all of you to attend. That's all I have.
Right. I was gonna go back to one thing that I also forgot to say is I was a speaker at the Lutheran Luncheon today and Don LaToli came and spoke also. And it was kinda funny because January 2015, we were there in January to speak and I was a speaker and so was he. So, it was just kind of ironic that we were coming back doing exactly the same thing in January and four months down the road, or four years down the road, excuse me. And it was just, a lot of people there were not able to come to the luncheon. So, quite a few of the things that we were able to pass on to them that I was giving them and what Don LaToli was giving them was new and it was information. So, some things you sound like you're, I'm repeating and Don said he does the same thing. He feels like he's repeating the thing, but so many people are not able to gather the information because they can't go to those meetings. So, we can always give more information to people and that's one of the nice things about that. All right, onward. I'm gonna, now going to item number nine. The consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Right. I have a motion by Donald Terry and a second by Garrett. Ask the city clerk to, the roll call please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let me say that again. Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
And Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going through this. Okay, then we're coming to consent public hearings. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item from individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask the city clerk if there's any speakers and cards turned in on this.
No, there's not.
Do anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And are there any items the council wishes to pull? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to approve the consent public hearing.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Garrett, and a second by Vice Mayor. David, let's go. Roll call please.
The motion was made by Councilmember.
Okay, okay, I thought it was Garrett. You'll take it, Brian. But it was Donald Terry's.
That's not how it works.
So, the motion was by Councilmember Terry, the second was by Vice Mayor Sander.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Item number 11, public hearing items and ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending sections of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code related to Title IV Business Regulations, Title VI Health and Sanitation, and Title 23 Zoning Code and Discussion and Direction on Future Code Amendments.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I ask the staff for a report, please.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, members of the council, I'm Dr. C. Gert with the Planning Department. Before you this evening are several code amendments. These are all pretty routine in nature, some code cleanups, clarifications, and some simplification of processes that we currently do in the Planning Department. We also have two discussion items for you this evening for discussion and direction for potential future code amendments that could come back later in this first quarter. The first cleanup item is to delete a reference to bingo halls under the code. If you recall, we did an amendment last year. This is just a cleanup to get rid of that chapter 4.28 which we repealed and then combined that with 4.26. The second section here is related to noise control. This is a carryover from an old county code. So, this chapter regulates noise control, various sections of noise standards. One section in there talks about issuing a special condition permit or a variance if somebody wants to temporarily or permanently increase noise levels. Generally, what we see is through a temporary use permit, that's when a special event might wanna increase noise levels. Construction generally has some temporary increase in those ambient noise levels. There isn't a scenario where we would likely want to give somebody a variance to permanently increase those maximum noise levels. To date, as a city, we have never issued one of these permits. There's a process to actually have a hearing board which we've never established. So, staff took a look at this, reviewed it and felt like it just wasn't a permit process that's necessary. So, we're recommending that the sections that reference the special condition permit and variance be deleted from Title VI of the code.
Can I ask a quick question? Cyrus, you might be able to just answer this. So, in construction projects and things like that where they may work early in the morning and things like that, I know, I'm not trying to make a complaint, but I know there are homes being built near me right now and they're starting seven o'clock in the morning. What's the typical unpermitted allowed operations for things like that?
They have to follow our construction standards and our construction, construction standards has specific starting, start and end hours depending on the location.
And the, and the certain days of the week?
And certain days of the week, right.
Okay, thank you.
The next section, we're moving on to Title 23, Article III. And this is more of a clarification for a particular use. We have received a request for one of our existing colleges here within the city to explore the opportunity to put dormitories on their site.
That's great idea.
The dormitories would be able to expand the classes that they offer and they're looking at doing some international recruitments. But in order to do that, they have to have a place to house the students. So, what we looked at was the definition of a school doesn't talk about dormitories, but they're generally an accessory use to a college or any kind of a private university. But what we did find was that group residential talks about dormitories. Unfortunately, the zoning of where the two uses are allowed doesn't match up. So, there are a lot of circumstances where a college may be permitted in a particular zone, but group residential isn't. So, thereby you've eliminated dormitories. So, what we're proposing to do is allow a dormitory via a design review process accessory to a college or a university. So, what that means is that you would have to have that established school in order to have the dorm. You couldn't just pop up dorms anywhere within the city. The design review would give us the ability to make sure those uses are integrated and that they serve the needs of the, of the university. So, that's the proposal for that particular situation. The next one is a cleanup item. What we're proposing to do is just add a reference to a chapter in the code that talks about outdoor storage areas so that the reader knows to go to that section in the code so they can see what all those development standards are for outdoor storage. Article 20, or Article VII, this is where we need to add in some parking standards for a dorm. So, we took a look at what the industry standard is. What we generally saw was that it's one stall per three occupants or one stall per three beds. So, a lot of them will have two to three beds in a room and that's how they determine what their parking is. So, in this case, we are proposing the industry standard which is one stall per three occupants for dormitories. So, if the council does want to amend the code to allow dormitories, we need to have parking standards for them as well. A lot of the students will probably not have a car, maybe some of them will. So, this accommodates four vehicles and then they'll have probably bicycle parking as well. The next section we're looking at is our standards on outdoor storage. Right now, if you have a primary use and you wanna do incidental outdoor storage of your goods and materials, you have to go through a minor design review process. And all that we're doing as staff is looking at our development standards such as height, screening, noise, hours of operation, and then making sure they're compliant with that. It's a very routine, simple, easy process. So, what we're looking to do is streamline, streamline that even more and require a zoning certification. Zoning certification allows us to check those development standards. We still issue an approval, they still have to meet findings, but it's a simplified process. But we're also proposing to clarify even further that if you wanna do primary storage as, or storage as your primary use, meaning I have a vacant parcel and that's, I'm just gonna store it, you still need to go through that design review process. That gives us a better level of review. We can ensure screening. Generally, with that is associated some sort of permit. You have a new curb cut, encroachment permits. So, we have to look at drainage. The third section under Article VII is accessory structures. Right now, it gets a little confusing in terms of how we interpret this. So, it says if you have a accessory structure or a landscape feature that's 120 square feet or less in size and less than eight feet in height, you don't have to have a setback from your property line unless you have a combustible structure. That's where the gray area comes in. We continually have to interpret what a combustible structure is. And so, more so than not, it is combustible and they need to have that three-foot setback. So, what we're proposing to do is just eliminate the whole combustible structure conversation of it and just require all accessory structures to meet a three-foot setback. That's generally what we're doing now, but this is just a clarify and cleanup.
So, would be like a propane tank or something, I'm guessing along that line?
A small storage shed, something like that. That's made out of a combustible structure. So, what we're having to do is bring fire in, make that interpretation more so than not it is combustible. So, this just gets rid of that whole process and then all those structures have to meet a three-foot setback.
Thank you.
The next section is under our temporary use permits. Model home complexes and model homes have to go through a temporary use permit. Everything that we're checking on a temporary use permit, we're checking on a building permit. And when a building permit comes in for these model homes, they're getting two different permits. One for the model home which generally will have a office in the garage and one for the actual home to convert that garage back or that space back to a garage. So, we're not benefiting from anything in terms of having this temporary use permit because we're signing off on that final occupancy to ensure that they're converting that space back over. So, it's just a process that we're trying to streamline and eliminate. The last section in Title 23 is just amending two different definitions. The first one to amend group residential to remove dormitories. And the second one is to amend the definition for schools to add dormitories as an accessory use to a school. So, moving on to our two discussion items.
Can I ask a quick question that?
Sure.
Didn't come up. And I can't remember what our current policy is, but it came up three times last week in meetings that I had with my day job. What is our policy around accessory dwelling units on residential lots?
So, accessory dwelling units are now heavily regulated by the state. So, there's various categories in terms of a detached accessory structure, a junior accessory structure. So, those are treated, it's a building permit process. And depending on if you're detached or attached, the standards are a little bit different. They're still limited by size, but in some cases, they might not have to provide parking. If it's detached and it's standalone, they do have to provide parking. So, the standards have changed a little bit, but it's a building permit process.
Okay. I think you answered my question. Okay, we can all go home. That kinda answered my question. So, I, I get that a lot in Cat Village probably doesn't have a yard big enough to put something legally on it.
Right.
But for the lots that would be allowed, and I know there's, there's some bills that are basically gonna make it by, they're trying to make it by right and a million other things. So, we, we have a process for doing that?
Yeah, there's still development standards they have to meet. They still have to meet certain setbacks. They still have to, there's lot coverage that goes into place. But the state law is getting a little more lax in terms of what we can and can't do. So, as the law changes, eventually our codes are gonna need to be updated to reflect that as well.
Yeah, I, I think honestly, we should really take a look at how we incentivize or even promote that and maybe getting rid of that parking standard and even maybe getting rid of impact fees for them. I know that this is a much bigger topic in the Bay Area than it is around here, but especially in the older area, we have a lot of, we have a lot of homes with lots, plenty big enough.
Easily.
Yeah, like I think of Sun River, the house that I lived in, if there wasn't a pool there, you could have put two. I mean, you could have put another eight, nine hundred square feet, single story in that backyard with no problem. Not to mention if there wasn't, where they put one of the trees, you could have put a, you could have parked an RV in the backyard just because of where the, the gate was. So, I'm not saying we're cutting down trees, but at the same time, I know it's a huge conversation and just in the last week in meeting with Cala Chafé who wants to come up with a financing mechanism to do it. And you're looking at a lot of Bay Area places, including San Diego and some other ones that are waiving fees and expediting the implementation of these. But, you know, as we start to talk about next gen homes and all these other things, the fact that we have a large stock of housing that could accommodate these with, with honestly very little disruption to the neighborhood. I mean, most of these, when they're putting them in, aside from somebody who might just decide that they're gonna rent it, a lot of times this is to move grandma or grandpa in who's probably not gonna drive anyways or, or won't after a while. So, hopefully that's something that the next time we come to a code standard that we can talk a little bit more about that. And again, it only came out because I was asked a few times, not necessarily about Rancho, and I was just curious as to where we were with that. Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that for next time. So, our two discussion items tonight, the first one is solar canopies. This is becoming a pretty popular thing that we're seeing across the region where companies are coming in, property owners wanting to take their parking lots, remove trees and replace those with solar canopies or carport structures similar to what you see on the screen. Currently, our code does not address these. It does state that we do have a 50% shade calculation, but it is a tree canopy shade calculation. So, there isn't an interpretation, a gray area of whether or not we could allow these to count for that 50% of, of the shade structure. So, what we have seen in some other jurisdictions in terms of how they handle it is some will allow the trees to be completely removed and replaced with a solar canopy and they don't have to replace the trees anywhere else on the property. Some allow a percentage. So, let's say they had a 40%, you can do a 20-20 or you can do a 30-10. Some do require that the perimeter trees be maintained. Some require certain sized trees be maintained or replacement of additional landscaping on the site. So, what we're seeing at the counter is a lot more inquiries from property owners throughout the city wanting to go down a path of removing their internal parking lot trees and replacing them with solar canopy structures. So, because we don't address this, we felt that this was a good topic to bring to the council for further discussion. council for further discussion and potential direction on how to proceed. I'd like to also add that if we do go down a path of amending the code, we will likely have to amend our tree preservation ordinance. It does not address removal of trees for this type of scenario, so we don't have a mitigation requirement. We don't have anything that addresses it at this point.
This is a, this is a tough one in some ways. We have at least one installation of solar canopies in the city that is pretty amazingly unattractive, where all vegetation was eradicated. Yeah. And if you look at it from the street, you now see rock, metal fence, asphalt and steel structures. And it has completely altered, you know, the feel, the look, the local environment around that site.
Is that that apartment complex behind the property for?
No, it's, yeah. There's, I don't know if there's another equally sort of, yeah, this one's right on White Rock.
It's a state facility and.
State facility. We might have limited oversight in how they did it anyway.
Yeah, we actually had no oversight.
None. So that, but that's sort of a warning of how not to do this. Then there's also, and I'm not an expert here, but you know, there's also sort of an environmental trade off here. So solar's great, you know, you get, you get energy as long as the sun is shining, but if you lose the trees, you're also losing a ground cooling effect. You're losing a local air quality benefit. It's a carbon negative situation, I'm guessing versus the tree being there. So you know, some guidance, I don't think you just want to willy nilly sort of rip out all the trees and replace it with solar. We got to have some kind of healthy balance. And at the very least, it ought to be protecting the aesthetics of the site from the perimeter.
Well, I think there's two variables to what you just said. I'm going to put my, for another week, my Air District hat on to say, I'm pretty sure you're wrong. It probably is a net carbon minus. Yeah. Assuming smud is getting out of the business of dirty power generation, which they're still quasi good at that. They have a lot of great solar share programs and other things like that, but they still produce a lot of it the old fashioned way. Let's put it that way. But I agree with you as far as the balance of how you would do trees, but odds are having a whole bunch of solar means at some point, we're not using as much fossil fuel to produce the other energy. Where that lies, I'm not really sure. It's interesting because I think I kind of shared the same thing when, when they started putting up those solar panels, like, oh, that's going to look great. Like that's, that's awesome that they're doing this huge installation. What surprises me is in the smud footprint and to be talking to so many jurisdictions now and kind of outside of this region a little bit more for work, with the crisis of PG&E and what prices are going to look like in the surrounding jurisdictions and region because of God knows what's going to happen to that company, that the ROI on solar outside of this area is so much greater than it is here. And it always surprises me when I see these massive solar arrays go up and it's like, you're paying 40% less than everyone else in the state at best, maybe even less than that, right? Because we're in the smud footprint. So to me, it's just amazing that this is really that big of a problem, except we have massive parking lots that, that this works for because we have massive parking lots and a massive job hub. And you don't in a lot of the rest of the region. So yeah, I'd want to figure out how you strike a balance between that. Maybe it's keeping perimeter and requiring a certain number of replacement. But we definitely don't want to be getting in the way of progress along the, I mean, you know, when you look at, I'm trying to think of like HCD's office off of, is that 80? No, I guess it's I-5 right there in the Thomas. They put in a large solar, it's, it doesn't say De La Gada's name on it anymore, but it's, it's right there. I'm trying to think of the exit. It's El Camino, El Camino and I-5, right there. There's a large 12-story building, blue glass. And they have a, I think, a very nice landscaped area with, with a big solar array. But yeah, a lot of them you're seeing, you know, Sacramento Police Department, which is over off of Richards, they have a large one there and it's horrible looking. So figuring out how you strike that balance in doing it, but definitely we would want to, we would, we would want to, and not even, maybe not incentivize, but encourage more of this because it only makes what is a fairly aging business park more attractive if, you know, this building, when it goes to sell, has this installation already on it, right? The value to the property and to property owners as they invest in their, in their properties, I think is fantastic. So you know, we should figure out a way that we accommodate it while, you know, striking some balance there in some way. But again, it just amazes me that, that we have this kind of demand in an area where energy is so much cheaper than most of the rest of the state.
So if we could get some examples of what, you know? I did, I had one. I'm just being very quiet. Okay. Soulful. If we could get some examples of what it looks like for maybe the horrible and the good, so at least we can have some range so when we build this out. Because I really have no problem with putting in solar panels. I like them. I think it's a great thing. I think it adds, I put my business, business owner hat on, adds, I think it was 20% overall to the property and grows it. However, I don't like losing the canopy along the street. And so maybe it's something along that, like in the middle where the property is to allow, but I'd have to see some that actually work and don't. And the one person who I count on for all this is not here to tell me how it's supposed to be when it looks right and where I can go find that at. So maybe we can just put together so we can see it. And we're not voting on it today, right? Sars?
No.
No? Okay.
This is the.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very good with them. I'm excited that more businesses want to build in this area and improve their properties, but I don't want to do it forsaking the greenery because that really adds something. There's, you know, you don't want to be short sighted about this.
There's one other consideration and sort of based on what Donald just said. You know, the future of the office park with these giant parking lots may not be that core building surrounded by solar panels and parking. It may be that core building surrounded by more buildings and some sort of a structure. So in some older suburban office parks, yeah, you're seeing, and we are perfectly set up in some places to do this, where you develop the perimeter, maybe you put housing, maybe you put additional commercial space, you put structured parking behind it, then you get to the old building that was planted in the middle of the site. And you leave them access from, you know, one of the other sides so they still have their, you know, beautiful frontage, but you gain a ton of square footage and value on those other two sides. The risk is that if bunches of our parking lots become populated by these structures, these structures will economically kill the ability to redevelop into something else potentially. You know, 30-year leases, that sort of thing would suddenly be in the way and they'd be expensive to buy out. So we probably need to consider, you know, what the other implications are of allowing this sort of unfettered all over the place. There's got to be some sort of a balance or area.
Stop for just a minute. The, with this is a public hearing item. And after staff's report is done, then I should open up the public hearing to see if there are any speaker cards or anyone wants to speak on this. And if not, then the council, council can have more comments. But right now, I just want to go on that because that's the way this should be set up. First, ask if the staff has completed or if they have some more on your report.
I have one more discussion item after solar canopies.
Okay, go ahead and finish, please.
The final discussion item for this evening is a potential for a cigar lounge in the convention overlay district. The Magnolia House has inquired about potentially opening up a cigar lounge, which in our code, we currently reference that as a smoking lounge. It should be noted that smoking lounge doesn't just include cigars, it includes a hookah bar or anything else that could generate indoor smoking. So they're looking at doing this in the space above their existing restaurant. The code only allows these in two zones, GC and M1. While the Magnolia House is zoned GC, it is also in the convention overlay, which does not allow any sort of a smoking lounge. Additionally, there is a requirement for separation of 1,000 feet from any card room. As the council is probably aware, the Magnolia House just recently opened their card room. So that poses another issue for them as well. So if the council wishes to entertain any sort of movement on the code, there would be two areas that would need to be looked at is one, limiting this to the GC zone in that convention overlay. And the other one would be having to reduce that separation requirement for a cigar lounge or smoking lounge adjacent to a card room. So that concludes my presentation. I have recommendations to find the actual code amendments exempt from SEQA and introduce and waive the first reading. And then additionally, the last slide is just seeking the direction on those two discussion items.
Ready? Well, I'm going to thank you for your information on this. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask the city clerk if we get any speaker cards for this item.
I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak about this? Please come up.
Please introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Diane Rogers, Rancho Cudahoga Chamber of Commerce. I just want to echo Vice Mayor Sanders' comments regarding the parking. That's something we're seeing all over the country is the reduction of parking spaces. And those are one of the first things that are being taken out and it makes the property a lot more viable. In fact, when you were first talking about dormitories, that was one, I wanted to make sure that that's the most current information because, or how old that information is with regard to parking spaces at dormitories. Because one to three, I wonder if that's actually the most current ratio. I'm not suggesting that you're wrong, but I'm just wanting to make sure because most of the college students I know, that many, many of them don't even own cars, aren't interested in cars and things. So this, anyway, it's a trend that we're seeing across the country of reducing parking spaces in buildings such as that. So just what you were mentioning before. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Diane. Anyone else in, like to speak on this? Okay, any more comments from the council on this?
Just, go ahead.
I'll finish my thought on the, on the solar canopy. So an example would be the VSP parcel that's directly across from Capitol Village where you have sort of the Main Street feel. If you put solar in the VSP parking lot, you would block probably the most obvious spot where we would pursue that next generation of what does an office park look like? Because you could add housing right there. They'd be supported by the Main Street and support VSP. It'd be kind of a win-win. Or you could add, you could extend Main Street somehow. I don't know exactly what pencils out, but we want to be sure not to like, you know, stub our toes by allowing solar canopies everywhere and hurt our future economic development as a result.
Maybe just draw it in an area and say, put it right there?
Maybe, maybe it's a use permit thing and we go site by site. I don't know.
To me, I think, and I don't know, maybe it's a setback of minimum requirements or something like that. What, what to me seems like the easiest place to look at allowing these are data centers first because I don't think those are ever going to be obsolete or maybe not for a long time. I don't know. Maybe you know more about this, but.
It will never be obsolete.
Right. And so, so you're never going to have heavily parked areas for it. Maybe you put something around it that's housing, but it's not people heavy at those places, yet it's energy use heavy.
Yes.
So maybe we, there's a way to streamline it.
You're not allowed to have it heavy with people.
Right.
All data centers because due to protection and HIPAA and all the different laws, they don't want.
Right. So if we're looking at McKesson and Phillips and HP and everybody that has, what is it, 19 of them that we have here? That seems like an easy place to say, you can, we can start there, but these other places where they're people heavy, VSP, I think you're right that, like that's always been the dream that at some point, we're going to make it look like, like the townhouses around Villagreen Park and just run that all around there to where you can still see their building, but everything else makes it look like it's downtown.
Yeah.
So I think that's always been a theory. And it's funny because I'm also the guy that a few years ago, when the Bank of America call center went out, I was like, we should build a parking structure right there so we can have bigger events at Capital Green. Three years later, I will admit that is the worst idea possible. And you have, no, and you have, you know, you have cities like Menlo Park and some other ones, instead of building a garage, they went and started incentivizing Uber drop offs into their downtown. And they were able to save a ton of money and still drive a ton of traffic into their downtown and, and the eateries and stuff that they were suffering in that the answer was put a big parking structure downtown and then they decided not to. The cigar lounge. And I'm looking at Carrie because we had a fascinating conversation, I want to say six years ago. This was probably one of my first kind of harebrained ideas that I had as a council member was our e-cigarette conversation that also got mired in an update to the cigarette code or smoking code. And we got marred in, what do we do with hookah bars and everything else? And we agreed that let's pass the e-cigarette and vaping rules, come back. We did an update and we are now one of the most progressive cities when it comes to our smoking ordinances in this region and in the state. But we never did get to the hookah bar, smoking lounge, cigar lounge conversation. So if that's something that they are interested in, I would tell you that we talked about, what are the standards for filtration, for outgassing, for smells beyond their, their immediate vicinity? I don't remember that there was a thousand foot from a card room rule, so that was probably predating me because we didn't add that in. But if we're going to go down that path, we had talked about what kinds of health issues do the, do these existing businesses have on their surrounding neighbors, next door neighbors within the business parks that they're, or the business areas that they're in? How close they should be to childcare facilities? How close they should be to schools? How close they should be to places where children may frequent, like a restaurant? And you might want to ask the potential applicant if they really want to go through that much conversation because if we're gonna even consider that, that's the bare minimum of variables that I want to talk about. There's probably a lot more I can think of. And to me, you have a, what in my opinion, yes, it has a card room, but that is a family restaurant that you want to do this upstairs to and the amount of cost that it may take to ensure that there is no outgassing of cigarette smoke into that, anywhere near where children might end up being, is going to be an enormous importance to me. And again, this came up when we were, when we were doing the last smoking ordinance. And I want to say that was in my first year on council. And we just kind of punted this because we didn't have anybody that wanted to do a new one and we had existing, I want to say we have, we have one, right? I can't think of any other ones besides the one on Sunrise. So we have one and we basically kind of agreed that we'll just let them keep operating and we're not having other complaints and it's there and let it. But if we're talking new permits, there's probably going to be a lot more expectation than the last one that got opened, at least in my opinion. And again, this hasn't been brought up in at least five years, but I know when Carrie and I talked about it, we were barely scratching, what I just described is scratching the surface of what could and should be considered before we permit another one of businesses like that.
Garrett or David, anything else comments on this?
Yeah, cigar lounge is a tough one. Our original action about smoke shops was designed to remove a business that was by and large by the council considered to be unhealthy, but also a blight, a blight sort of, a blight sort of a business. And that dates pretty far back, Bob, when we did that. It's 2000, it's in the aughts somewhere. But that was the intent. And it was, it was part of a list of uses that we felt were not in any iteration sort of beneficial to the surrounding neighborhood. So cigar bar, like hookah bar might be pushing, you know, that, that sort of philosophy. There is certainly a health impact, could have impact to neighbors. I don't know though, that it has the same sort of negative impact to neighbors the way a smoke shop as we were, as we were experiencing at that time did or does have. So that would.
Can you define what you mean by smoke shop? Because when I hear that, I think of cigarette stores, which you can't smoke inside. What are you talking about?
There's cigarette stores, but you know, by and large, they sell a lot of marijuana, paraphernalia, that sort of thing, discount cigarette shops, smoke shops in general. And what you see is those, you know, clustered around poor neighborhoods. And then in those poor neighborhoods, you're, you know, facilitating access to a product that's not healthful, but also driving away adjacent businesses that really don't want to be next to the environment that's filled with smoke shops.
Right. Yeah, I guess my, what I'm more concerned about is the, the health impacts of secondhand smoke and even the people that have to work there and what they're signing themselves up for. I mean, it's kind of interesting, in some states, to have a, a business like that, it usually has to be a private club to where you have memberships and the employee, the employees aren't subject to the same OSHA rules that normal employees would be. Because it's a, I believe they're, they establish themselves as a nonprofit to exempt themselves from certain.
Well, I like cigars and I don't think they're, I think cigar lounge tends to be a little bit of a different draw of groups. It would just be a matter of, you know, I've never seen a cigar shop that's inside a restaurant. And that's, yeah, that's weird to me because some smoke eventually goes up and then comes back down again. It's not going to go up into the atmosphere and then they're going to pump it through. So it would take a lot to clean it out, especially since it's a restaurant and a card room and now a smoking bar. I think a cigar lounges tend to be a lot, you know, very different type of group going there. It's not a smoke shop. It's, you know, high-end cigars and. It's, you know, high-end cigars and place and certain individuals smoking. It's not like, but to have it above a card lounge is just, it's a one-off to me.
It, yeah, it gets around the one problem, which is I don't think that scares away neighboring businesses, but I, I don't know. I remain to be educated on that, I guess.
Right. So, I mean, if they're really interested, I'd, you know, I think it's something we should definitely take up because a cigar lounge, you know, would be something that's, you know, it's a nice business, but I guess we'd have to do everything that Donald said to make him even feel comfortable with putting some type of place like that in the city.
I mean, I, the last time we talked about this, it ended up on the news that we were even discussing it. And we had, we had the one business that wanted to do it. And as we were discussing updating to the smoking ordinance, which was more of, can't smoke in outdoor dining, can't smoke near, you know, the doorway to businesses or, and have, you know, you can't, can't smoke in parks, you can't smoke, like, we added a bunch of other rules. And then we had this business and we wanted to decide, did we want to put all of this effort into figuring out what is the most state-of-the-art filtration system so that you can do all of this? Right? That's where this really got to. And we said, you know, we have one business in town and nobody else is asking for it, so do we really want to put all that effort into it? I would say, though, if someone wants to do this, we're gonna put in the effort. And it may be a very, very heavy lift to comply with whatever we come up with to ensure safety of the surrounding areas, especially considering it's a restaurant downstairs that isn't 21 and older, right? This is, this is a, this is a normal restaurant that people take their families to on a regular basis, including mine. And that's going to raise the bar of what that expectation is, is, you know, depending on if it was, you know, you want to go put this out in an industrial area, that's gonna be a lot different than, than the fact that you're upstairs. And you're right, you know, you can have two completely different filtration systems. That still doesn't mean that you're not outgassing into the downstairs. If you leave a window open now, you're posing a threat to...
Yeah.
To the health of, in my, you know, I got under this kick about smoking ordinances back in the day because, you know, I walked into Brookfields and there's a handwritten sign on an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper that says, while, you know, the laws are murky or something to that effect about e-cigarettes, please refrain from smoking the, please refrain from using them within Brookfields. And they had to resort to that because obviously, some knucklehead walked in there smoking, you know, puffing on one of those things and thought, this is fine and it's not, it's not smoking. So then we went through and did this whole thing. This was the, so this is the last variable of the last thing that we didn't cover. And if, and we did a very thorough vetting of all of the rest of these policies. And if we're gonna go down this path, it's gonna be a lot of work. And I think any potential applicant should understand that at least one of us is gonna ask a lot of questions and want to understand what the industry, what the state-of-the-art industry standards are for this type of a business anywhere in this country. And whatever those standard, whatever the highest standard is that exists in, that we can figure out, that's the one I want. And again, yeah, I don't smoke cigars anymore. I have in the past and I, I used to enjoy them. So I'm not opposed to this idea, but I'm opposed to secondhand smoke getting to any children in our city.
So can we, so should we run this up the flagpole or is it time to run it up the flagpole or...
I, this, this is just my recommendation to any potential applicant. Listen to what I just said and then decide if you really want to do that. Because it's probably not going to be cheap for the applicant or us to do it.
So council, aside from this specific location, for seeking guidance or direction from the council, am I hearing that cigar lounges, as long as it's not associated with a public use, like a restaurant, could be a possibility, but...
My, so again, this would give, I'll give it the same standard that I gave it five and some odd years ago. I don't think staff or anybody should take the time to work on this unless we think there's an applicant that's serious about going through this process. That's why we didn't work on it, was because we didn't have anybody to say, let's put in the amount of work that it's gonna take to research, what is the best standard for protecting the public outside of this business entity? If there's somebody that's willing to, that's willing to go through that and understands the cost that it would be to the city and to them and the time it's gonna take, yes, go ahead and do it. If, if, if they just heard what I said and go, you know what, maybe I'll find some other use for that business space, we shouldn't do anything.
I'm thinking maybe the answer is a use permit option, because those are completely at our discretion. And we can set, you know, whatever requirements we need on top of it. We don't necessarily have to completely define it in advance either. We can do it when the application arrives. Is that a fair, a fair understanding of use permit?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be, that would be an appropriate use.
We don't want to spend a bunch of money researching this. We don't even know if we have an application.
Right.
This would at least allow a path to consideration of it.
Right, right.
See, my concern with that, and I...
It makes it too easy?
No, no, no. My concern is this is, if you look at like American River Brewery, right? They went through, I'll just, I'll just say, a fairly arduous process of being the first brewery to open in town. And then five more breweries benefited from the fact that they went through the headache of us learning how to do this. So, again, yes, this first, whoever is the first applicant to the table on this is going to, it's going to take a long time. It's probably gonna cost a lot of money. That's a little unfair, but it just kind of is what it is. But yeah, if it's, if it's a conditional use permit and then whoever that first wanted, they're, they're the guinea pig that we're gonna figure out how, how high of a standard we need to make this. And again, that's why we just, I just kind of left it alone. So it's kind of funny that you bring this up and it, and it just reminds me, yeah, we never finished that conversation. And it's because no one was really interested and we had the one business that existed and we figured, let them operate. We don't have a bunch of complaints and we can leave this one alone. But if we're going down that path, what, any potential applicant needs to understand that we're going to expect a very, very high level of standards when it comes to business operations and tenant improvements.
What about the, right down the street here, you have the card room and the restaurant and do they have a place for the people to smoke?
No.
No, they can't do it within 100 feet of their front door, which is...
It's not allowed.
Okay. All right, well, I hadn't even thought about it until right now, so I thought I would ask on that.
And actually, since they opened, we passed it that they, I mean, they can't have ashtrays on their tables outside because we don't allow smoking in outdoor dining. So they've even been subject to stricter rules since opening. But again, this is, this was, this was the one piece we didn't get to and it was really on purpose because nobody else was really asking us for anything. I think the only other thing we didn't address was Diane had the question about permits for golf tournaments. And then we realized there wasn't a golf course within the city and there wasn't one planned. So we left that one alone too because we didn't need to, there wasn't a problem for us to fix. But this was, this was still the one that we just didn't, we didn't deal with because we didn't have anybody that was pushing us. But if we do, I think they need to understand, at least, again, I'm talking a lot, so I don't know if anybody disagrees with me and doesn't think we should have high standards when it comes to this kind of business, but I do.
Yeah, I was just gonna, just to clarify for the record of benefit of city staff and the clerk, it sounds like what staff is saying, at least as it relates to the cigar lounge issue, is the direction stat, the council's giving is to possibly explore a use permit that would have some of the, a use permit process for a potential code amendment.
Thanks. Cyrus, you had the...
No, I think it's, I'm also, want to be clear, I think with this specific location, if we've had an inquiry and if they're interested, they also have to provide the necessary technical background work to prove to us that there's no impact to the restaurant.
Yeah. And then that's the thing about this site, regardless of the motivations of the 1,000 feet from a card room, things which clearly is not related to what this, this question is, I think any applicant would have a very hard time meeting whatever standard we have that close to a restaurant. That would be, that, that kind of a restaurant, right? It's one thing if this was a 21 and over bar that's next door or near it or upstairs or downstairs. It's a whole nother thing when you have a restaurant that also caters to children and families. That, that's gonna be a much different standard than a lot of other places that you could put this.
Dorsey, do you have clear direction on this topic?
I do, and I think what staff will do is circle back around with the property owner and go over the information with him and see if he's, wants to pursue it at this location or not.
And as far as the direction goes on the solar canopies, I think what, what we're hearing from the council is that look at some potential alternatives or potential successful models and examples that we can present to the council for the future discussion and consideration.
Okay, well, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. And if we're not going to have any thing on tonight for the action on this, and come back to it after you get more information to pass on to us.
But we do need to move the changes, the updates to the ordinance, right? And waiving the first reading?
Up to the cigar lounge?
Everything before that, though, yeah. So I'll, I'll move staff's recommendation on the update to amend the, is it zoning ordinances? No?
Uh, various. It's to Title IV, Title VI, and Title...
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'd like to second the staff, the staff recommendation. And if I just may clarify, it's technically just to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, which has all of those changes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna ask the city clerk in 12.1, ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Enforceable covenants, conditions and restrictions for the Douglas 98 project.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and councilmembers. Elizabeth Sparkman, Community Development Director. And this item tonight is purely informational. It's a report back on some enforceable CCNRs that we recorded for a specific project. Thank you, Frank. And as part of this process, Carrie Simpson and the Planning Department provided input. And as we were working on these enforceable CCNRs, we asked both divisions, what were the most prevalent issues you're, we're dealing with? And then we worked with the property owner to come to a solution. So the purpose of the enforceable CCNRs is to promote a healthy and safe community by providing a clear standard for the appearance and maintenance on properties. And it's on this initial project, which is Douglas 98. But the goal is to record a similar document on all new development. So the most prevalent issues encountered between planning and code enforcement are these 10 items here. Garbage cans, in-op vehicles, you know, landscape maintenance, removal of trees and replacement of those trees, excessive paving, fence visibility issues, commercial vehicles in the residential areas, front yard fences, accessory structures, and home-based businesses. So the intent is to address these specific issues and to reinforce property maintenance standards set forth in the municipal code so that we minimize the unintended violations. I think what's happened in the past is in existing community and, you know, in some of the new development areas, property owners take actions because they're not informed. They don't intend to violate the code, but it just happens. So for this to be successful, what we're gonna have to do is a lot of outreach to the developers, to the contractors that are out there working in the new developments, to the future property owners, you know, through real estate sales, and just keep them informed. So we're quickly gonna just go through these issues and what we're trying to solve. So the, and... So what I'm gonna do on each one of these is tell you where in the CCNRs it resides. So garbage can storage, right? We want them to keep them screened from public view. So in Section 1.19 of the CCNRs, it specifically calls this out and addresses that there's really nothing in the CCNRs that isn't in the municipal code. It's really just to provide a place for convenient information for the homeowners. The next item is the inoperable or non-registered vehicles, right? This is in Section 1.09 of the CCNRs. So that non-registered or in-op vehicles, boats or trailers, just, you can't park them in the right of way or on the property. Paving surface, this is one of those things that is this unintended violation, right? So this isn't contained in Section 1.05 of the CCNR. So no more than 40% of the front yard area can be a non-pervious surface, you know? And then you want a separation of five feet from the side property line so that you can have landscaping. You know, as the lots get smaller and we have two-car garages, sometimes it becomes difficult to meet that 40%. So in the future, we might want to revisit that as we have smaller lots.
Are you thinking about some of the homes, for instance, that Beazer Homes on International Drive? Because some of those really don't have much of a front yard at all.
Exactly. So just because if you have a two-car garage, sometimes you're already bumping against the 40, right? And so we'll, we will visit that. Other jurisdictions use 50%. But really, the intent is so that property owners don't inadvertently excessively overpave beyond what's necessary, just because they don't know they're not supposed to. Trees, you know, sometimes people, you know, they, you're required to have at least one tree in your front yard. And if they cut that tree down, they need to replace it with another tree. So that's, this will become, is, is already a requirement to replace that tree. Accessory structures and patio covers. So, you know, you, we need to have a five-foot setback from the property lines and, you know, not to exceed 120 square feet. So in this case, these CCNRs say that your, your accessory structure cannot exceed 120 feet, right? In our existing code, they can be bigger, you just need to get a permit. But in this case, it's limited the size. Fences, we have two issues with fences. You know, we can't have fences in front of the house that exceeds three feet because you're gonna have visibility issues. And obviously, you know, in the front yard, we don't want any kind of chain link, woven wire, barbed wire, electric fences. So, or it's already in our municipal code, but again, the intent, the intent of all of this is so that we can create and provide literature, work with our communications department, to provide literature that we can give to the property owners and educate them. Commercial vehicles, you can't park them, you know, in your driveways. If they can fit in your garage, that's fine. Home-based businesses, right? The properties are supposed to be a residential property. You can't have a home-based business. And Carrie, maybe you can address this one a little bit on home-based businesses?
Yeah, you can't have a home-based business without having a business license. And basically, the rules and regulations are that your business have to keep your house looking as if it is a residential property, so not a lot of customers coming to the home. And what it is, is a CCNR is just kind of clarify this so that we go into new, to new areas with people knowing what the rules are.
Right. So if you have a home-based businesses, that's allowable, it just can't be visible, can't be obvious that it's a...
Right. And there's the business license for that, yes.
Right. And then landscaping, right? They're, they're responsible for installing landscaping within 90 days, but they also have to maintain it in good order and attractive conditions. So this is the last one. It wasn't listed on the top 10, but, but this is in the CCNRs, right? You, you cannot park a boat, RV, or trailer in your driveway or on the public street. So it's a given. And again, this is one, through education, we need to work with the developer and their agents in the home sales to make sure if people are buying the property, they're not planning on, on parking these in their driveway or in the street. So again, this is, this is the end of the presentation and we're welcome to take any questions. But what we're really trying to do here is preemptive, preemptive through education to keep the new areas looking new and maintain the property values out there. So I'm welcome to take any questions.
Well, we're talking about all the new development. We're not talking about the residential areas which have been there since 1950, whatever.
No, we're not talking about the existing neighborhoods. What we're, like I said, this is preemptive, going into the new development areas through education, through recording these CCNRs against the properties, through information, through discussions, through outreach, through communication to prevent unintended violations in the new areas of the city.
So the challenge is, without setting a higher...
So the challenge is, without setting a higher bar, properties will decline over time.
Right.
Can be a short time, can be a long time, but inevitably suburban development declines.
Right.
Um, and so what we as a city have to do is find impediments to that decline. And basically, that all revolves around setting higher standards. Because if you don't, your property values drop, neighborhood amenities fail, the quality of the neighborhood falls, schools become less attractive, economics of the place crack, and you end up with an unattractive neighborhood that becomes a huge service demand on the city for police and other services.
Right.
So the goal is build a neighborhood and keep it in good condition over time. Because otherwise, you damage the investments of everybody who lives there, you harm their quality of life, you hurt the city's finances, you make the cities as a whole less attractive. You gotta, we gotta do whatever we can to prop those standards up there and make them enforceable. So option one is have a really strong homeowners association that will, on its own stead, enforce high standards. An example of this would be Gold River. An example of this would be, uh, the earliest development in Anatolia, the Lennar portion, which is, has a strong homeowners association. In that case, that homeowners association has a huge stake in maintaining those properties and property values. It's their charge. In that, in that situation, the city ought to play, uh, second to that homeowners association. So if it were to fail, somehow be derelict, and it's responsibility, we could step in and take over. But if that's not possible, and developers resist that because they, they fear future litigation and things from homeowners associations, and some buyers don't want to live in a homeowners association for, they fear them, then we have to set some other form of a standard. Or, you know, this decline is inevitable. So this is our attempt, basically, to create CCNRs that exceed what our code would normally allow. Is that correct? That would allow us to enforce, would enforce a higher standard of CCNR in a neighborhood. The other thing I need to say is, in a lot of new neighborhoods, CCNRs are issued to new homeowners, and they're essentially meaningless.
Right.
Because the only way that a homeowner would have to enforce those is to sue their neighbor for violation of the CCNR, which they could successfully do. But that could cost them thousands of dollars and months and months and tons of animosity. Um, and so in, in essence, it's never done, virtually never done. Particularly in, in a suburban setting. So those CCNRs that are often given out in new neighborhoods are, are meaningless. And those neighborhoods then endure the decline that comes in all suburban development. So this is our effort to try to make a real CCNR, um, in the absence of a homeowners association. Is that a fair sort of summary of where we are?
And also, because we want to work with the, uh, Communications Department to create literature that enforces the CCNRs, puts the information out there in a simple form, because the homeowners aren't going to sit there and read their CCNRs, right? This happens to be one chapter of the CCNR, but they're not going to read them. So it's on us to create the information, to leave behinds, to keep working with the developer through construction to make sure that subcontractors don't step in and offer additional work that violates, right? I don't, I don't know that property owners intentionally want to violate codes. I think they do it unintentionally because they're uninformed. So it's on us to inform them.
Can I ask a quick question? Okay, so let me make sure. This is for Sunridge Park, or at least the area that, that was written in, huh? Past Sunridge Park? I thought it was Sunridge Park.
This is North Douglas.
North Douglas, right? North Douglas ninety. So this is the new, the new stuff we're building. We already have the power to enforce CCNRs in five point oh point one point two. So all we're really doing is a communication to tell them that there are CCNRs. So be careful because you're not going to be able to put, half of these you can't do. You can't put a boat. There's no place to put a boat. That's impossible. Like, half the, the rules that are really big that, like, you know, our stumps don't get big enough. We, we barely have any grass. It's mostly concrete. So they don't really fit for Douglas ninety-nine because of the size and scope of the houses. But we're just, all we're doing is communicating with them, hey, there's some rules. These are them. Be forewarned, because if you break them. So it's just a communication thing.
And also to get in front of it, to where, you know, this might be, this may not be the neighborhood for you, right? If you can't accomplish the things you want to accomplish because of the CCNRs.
Oh, I get it.
Maybe this isn't the neighborhood for you.
So you want to tell them the CCNRs before they get in there, get upset that, yeah, I didn't realize that I couldn't put a canopy and put my boat in the front of my house next to my RV.
So this is where we really want that simplified literature to be created so that we can put it in the sales office, work with the developers, make sure the contractors out there know what they shouldn't be trying to do for site jobs.
Front lawn, you can't keep a junk car in your driveway that you work on on weekends. Sort of things that generally, CCNRs all over the state say you can't do.
And the way this one is written, I think it prevents garage conversions as well. Because in the, um, land use, it's for, you know, single-family only, not to exceed two stories and a minimum of two parking places in the garage. So without saying no garage conversions, I think we've accomplished that.
So, you know, when Garrett and I were in Texas, visiting Garland, their hot-button code enforcement issue was people who parked too many cars on the street in front of their houses. They wanted all cars in driveways. And it's, it's not just Garland. It's all kinds of jurisdictions in Texas. That's like the hot button. You don't, that, that offends the neighbors. I found that fascinating. They didn't have all the other stuff that we have. They didn't have people paving their lawns. They didn't have weeds and stuff growing all over the place. They didn't have-
It's Texas. They don't have grass anyways.
They have that, well, there they do.
No, they have, their grass is cut to perfection.
It's like a golf course everywhere. And these are not wealthy suburbs. That's just a high standard that they, that they have.
When it's ice and flat like that, and you don't have to worry about flooding, you don't have grading, so you don't have those issues. Go to Fresno, the, the, the lawns are beautiful because they're all flat, because nobody planned for flooding.
If you're trying to get ahead of the whole thing, and you said, when people come in to look at models, and they have it laid out, and they can see the, uh, home is about this big on a big spray out, spread out there in the, in the office, and they can see this is what it's going to look like, and they can see it's going to be eighteen hundred square feet or twenty-five hundred square feet, whatever. And they can also see on the wall, on this, right next to the home, this is what you can't do, or this is what you can do. You can do it right there. Because if you give them this paper about this thick and say, now you have to read this and make sure you see, I can guarantee they're not going to. But if it's in small, one little piece of paper like this, with a thing written across like that, then it'd be a lot easier to say, this is what is the, uh, CCNRs are standing. You know, this is what we're waiting for. And you can't do this, you can't, you can, and you can do the other things. You don't want to have everything negative, you know.
Right.
You're not going to sell anything.
Well, and-
The message is positive, really. The message is, if you buy this house, we're going to help you preserve the value. We're not going to let the neighbor raise ostriches. We've had that happen. Right?
Who raised ostriches?
Uh, no, White Rock neighborhood. We had a guy who was raising ostriches in his backyard.
Right.
I, I think the important part to this is more of the, the understanding when somebody's buying a house or it's being resold.
I'm not making that up, right?
Yeah.
Did you find the ostriches running through there?
No, the neighbors could hear them, and they were looking over the fence. Um, but no, I, I think what's important with this is, um, is that you're reminding somebody that there is an enforcer to these rules. So three of us live in neighborhoods that have HOAs. Some days I don't enjoy that, but, um, more so because a lot of my neighbors know that I'm on the city council, and when they get angry with the HOA, they somehow think I have more pull than they do to deal with it. But, you know, we've also heard the, the flip side of people that own RVs and own boats and things like that, that, that's why they don't live in an HOA is because they don't want to have those types of expectations. So I think the happy medium here is to, we're reminding people that in the absence of an HOA, the city is going to act in enforcing these CCNRs. And it's not about, you need to go look through this whole reference guide. It's that, you know, if you think you might be violating some of these rules, like if you lived in Anatolia and other places like that, and, and town, well, Anatolia's, besides your area, Anatolia's really the only other one. Is reminding them that, you know, if you own boats, you, you should probably look at that book before you decide to buy this to decide whether or not you want to do it. The car thing, I think, is an interesting issue because we do have that in other places. And I don't know if you've been asked, I know I have been asked on multiple occasions by, by residents to ban on-street parking. Um, but what happens in communities like mine, where you have, you know, back in the, you know, uh, two thousands when they were selling forty-five hundred square foot houses that had eight bedrooms, you know, unless you were a very large family that moved, you know, both of the grandparents in with you, and they don't drive, odds are, somebody bought that house and they have six roommates, and they're all in their twenties, and they all have a car. Um, and there's not really a way to fix that anymore. Um, and so Carrie and I, I, I remember getting some of these emails, and it's just, you know, logistically, you know, I, to me, would it be nice to not have that? Sure. But if not, you're going to, you know, depreciate the value of that house and the fact that you can't put that many roommates in the same place. Therefore, you know, to put one family in a three thousand square foot house, you know, they're only going to be able to afford, you know, eighteen hundred bucks instead of thirty-five hundred, which is what they're getting when they have six roommates. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that, but I do, I do see that you're cutting, you're, you're cutting your market for, for some of those properties that, you know, we keep talking about, you know, we want executive-level housing. Well, in a lot of instances in this town, that turns into six or seven cars sometimes.
You might be, might be boosting the value of the neighbors, though. I mean, theoretically, if you could say, no, you can't park six cars there. I don't think we can do that. But, you know, if you did that, then the neighboring properties wouldn't have cars parked in front of them all the time.
Yeah.
Their values would probably go up a little.
I, I would also point out that I had neighbors, and this is living in the Villas, where they just seemed to have a lot more kids. Like, like, we weren't pulling our weight because we only had two kids. But if you look at like my, my parents' home was where they didn't have kids. Next door to them was a family of five. Across the street was a family of five. Across the street from that was a family of three, and across from them was a family of four. Um, most of those were children, but in two of the families, they had, they had three driving teenagers or older and had two more not far behind. So there's also that issue where the parents are both working, and you have three teenagers, all of which saved up enough money to buy a car. Now, cars aren't nearly as valuable to the younger generations as they used to be. I think that was, you brought that up. But we're still seeing that issue that, that, you know, you can build, we're building these, you know, the Villas are a great example where you, you never can put a boat in the backyard when you have eighteen inches from the fence line to your house. But, you know, you have an area for two cars, yet, you know, you have that many driving age people in, in a house, and that has nothing to do with, you've rented out every room. You just have kids that need a car, and their high school's a thirty-five-minute drive away. So, again, we see, we still have these conundrums of, of issues when it comes to that exact problem.
You know, on a positive note, they also put in provisions on their own, like no short-term rentals. So, you know, no, no one can turn their home into an Airbnb.
That's hard to enforce, though. Figure out that they're doing it.
And a lot of this might be, you know, with good education, everybody in the neighborhood is going to know what's allowed and what's not allowed, right? So there, there's peer pressure built into the neighborhood, right? And the city has the right to enforce without obligation. So we don't have to be out there enforcing, but we have every right to enforce and to recover our costs if, if we have to follow up an issue. So, you know, we're positive that this is a step in a good direction and, you know, with the right outreach materials and information and, you know, proactive communication.
And this is, in essence, our, our standard at this point, right, going forward? As we approve residential development, suburban solid development, these sort of standards have to be in place.
And some of the other new developing areas that didn't have this condition to do this, um, you know, reaching, I'm reaching out to Cressley and to Lennar just to see if we can proactively get them to record these as they, you know, before they build their new developments, Montalena as well.
Well, Cressley agreed to it when we approved the designs.
In their second phase, they will. Their first two, they didn't want to because it would cost, it was going to cost a lot of money to pay an attorney to develop these. Well, now we, we kind of have a turnkey model. They can just change the name and use it, hopefully.
And a lot of money for them versus a hundred years of us doing code enforcement to maintain properties. That's an interesting balance.
You know, you think it's maintaining their reputation as well, right? The developer builds a certain product, a certain neighborhood, a desirable neighborhood, so they're going to want to keep it desirable.
Another, I think, unique feature of this CCNR, not only is the city a third-party beneficiary that has the right to enforce, but the, i- if there is a dispute that arises, um, it's, you don't have to go file a case in traditional Superior Court and spend years and a thousand dollars litigating. There is a judicial reference process system that's akin to arbitration, binding arbitration. So I think that's also a practical and useful tool.
So there's, there's no action. This was purely informational. So I thank you for your time.
So, so we will be approaching developers with this during the DA process?
It's a requirement in the DAs that we've done for Sun Creek and Real De Oro in some of the existing areas that haven't start, started building, like Montalena and, um, Grantline two oh eight. I'm proactively reaching out to them to see if I can get them to record these against their property.
Yeah, and, and I think right now-
I think they're open to it.
Because I know, David, you and I have had a disagreement about at least one thing that you say, which is that we, we agree that everyone's going to have an HOA, that we all want to do that. I think the exercise that we just had around boats and RVs and trailers and things like that, give me some cause for protest, say that, that I, I don't necessarily agree that that's a mandatory policy that we're forcing every developer to do until we have a workshop and actually vote and decide that that is what the policy is. Because we don't, we've never actually discussed that as a council and said, yes, that's what we want staff to do. Well, hang on. And so you've been a vocal proponent of this, and I think staff has listened to you, but, you know, two of us were never here whenever that last discussion was about this subject. And I think there was clearly a portion of our community that was very much opposed to that idea, that it at least needs to have their ability to come up here during public comment and say, that's something that I, I disagree with. And then we can decide as a council whether or not we do or don't agree. But at some point, we do need to agendize this subject and talk about it. If, now voluntarily, if, if developers want to choose to do that, that's fine. But saying that that's a requirement of their DA, at this point, I'm not comfortable saying that that's a policy, that, that this council has weighed in enough to say this is something that we're doing from now on.
So if there's no common property maintenance, as, and I'm looking for Frank to confirm this, the discussion we've had with city attorney's offices, if there's no common property maintenance that they have to require, you can't force them to have an HOA. So this is why we went this route of the CCNRs. So.
All righty. Anything else from Garrett? Okay. Well, thank you for the, um, information. And we will see how this goes with the developers and the people who are buying the homes and see what's going to happen. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, then onward to, um, thirteen, council request for future agenda items. Do we have any?
I want to do what Donald just said. I think it's time we actually have that meeting to talk about that. How did you word it? To talk about HOAs and, and CCNRs and what we're actually going to enforce when they come into the city. I think it's time. You keep bringing that up over and over and over. I think it's time we actually do one and make a final decision.
Yeah, I, I would say make it an agenda item. It doesn't need to be anytime, like, it's not an urgent item, but at some point, we, you know, I, I don't know. I don't think there's going to be a ton of opposition to that idea. We just, we've never actually said it and voted on it.
I think, uh, I'm considering that maybe an appropriate forum would be a four o'clock work session. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, or a Tuesday, or a Tuesday work session.
We've discussed this before, work sessions, um, at annual retreats. I think there's a large list of things you could apply that standard to, and we want to be kind of cautious about how we do that. Because we lock ourselves in. These are all in the category of a developer coming to the city or an applicant coming to the city and asking staff, what do you advise us to do about this? And staff saying, well, what I've seen is five oh votes or four one votes in this direction. So you might want to be aware of that. Without having a formal policy on any of those dozens of items that might come up. You under, you understand how that?
Yeah, it just, I, I don't know. And this has always been my mindset since I've been here, is offering the most amount of predict, predict, uh, predictability to any process in interacting, whether that's permitting, whether that's DAs, um, anything. Because, I mean, and I'll give you a great example. Um, when Burning Barrel was getting ready to open, and they were going to put an air conditioner on the roof, and there was an interpretation of the code that said that you had to screen this thing and how heavy it was going to be, and then they had to re-engineer the roof and all these other things. And then you had our economic development manager say, get some PVC pipe, put it together for how big it's going to be, put it on the roof, and then go out to the street and take a picture and see if you can see it, which you couldn't, right? Then it's like, the number of times that we have to go back, that, that the interpretation of what, what is the code as often as we can to put predictability to it. So whether it's a developer or anybody that's looking to buy land, uh, or buy somebody else's lots or whatever, if they know this is what is expected, like, if I'm buying that lot, I'm going to have to do X. The more times that we can just say, this is what it costs to do business here, and this is the hoops you got to jump through, the better. And again, I'm not saying that there's huge opposition to the statement that you make, which is that, but I have a problem with saying, we all agree on X. I've never formally discussed it and voted on that. So there's no way to say we all agree on anything when you've never heard my opinion on it. on it. And in, and in absence of a, of a, of a dissenting voice, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we have a policy.
We, we have indirectly. I mean, DAs have come before us. I've expressed my opinion, asked for support, and gotten it. So, that basically is a council endorsement of the idea.
No, no.
And that's happened repeatedly.
Absolutely not, no. When, when, and I'll give you a great example, when Cressley came here and you brought that up, that their hope, and I think staff's hope, was to get a unanimous vote. Some of us were just willing to vote on it without that provision. You wouldn't. Therefore, we took a, a pause, and the developer wanting to get your support accepted that change. I would have voted for it without it. So, in that case, no, just because I voted for the same motion that you did does not mean that I endorsed your position. You see what I'm saying? And again, I'm not saying that I wouldn't have, but if we had had a separate discussion and we brought in a whole bunch of boat owners and RV owners and trailer owners in here that said, I don't like HOAs and that's why I moved to Ranch Cudovah, which is what we heard, I'm not necessarily sure that I might have that, that same opinion, depending on who's in the room and the, and the, and the input that we're getting. At the, at the point in time when that came up with Cressley, I wanted to pass that development, regardless of what your position was.
It, well, it's important for you to realize that when you vote for something, you're voting for every line of that something.
I agree.
You can't later say, well, I voted for A through F, but not, not G.
I voted for it, but that doesn't, but that doesn't mean that-
Which means we were 5-0 on that topic.
But separate of that discussion, on this specific subject, that may have been a different thing comparatively to having a development directly in front of me that's ready to, to put in, to put in roads and to put in malls.
That's fine, so we're both right. You're saying, under different circumstances, I might vote differently, and I'm saying we have a history of voting 5-0 on this. We're both right.
Correct. But again, talking about just this subject alone may be different.
So, that's 3-0 for, to do it. If you heard them, that means 3-0. I'm pretty sure we don't need to take a vote, they all want to agree to talk about it.
Yeah.
And Garrett's never got to weigh in, so I'd like to-
I agree that we don't agree all the time, and it's, uh-
And sometimes we-
I agree.
But, but sometimes we agree all the time, so that's good to know.
We don't have any set time for this, uh, one particular agenda item. It will be in the future, be in, on the agenda, but we don't have a set time on that yet.
We would look for a 4 o'clock work session to have a conversation. We could, yeah. The only, the only issue is that we are getting into the budget season, and very soon